7 o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Huntington Township Supervisors.
Thank you. Okay, any public comment on agenda items? Okay.
No, but I'd like to compliment Pat on her arrangement. The front door.
4-H kids.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Thank them, because it looks good.
Thank us for having our meetings here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the Board of Supervisors, the October 10th minutes were distributed. Any comments or questions or corrections?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting.
I second it.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list. I have it in front of us. Any questions on the bill list?
I don't have any.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bill list, it's being moved in second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Financial report.
You putting that up, Gus?
Okay, the financial report for November 14th. In the general fund, we had receipts of $33,787.66. The expenditures were $83,136.50. That lets a balance in the general fund of $863,127.43. In the ARP, they had interest received of $18.35. There were no expenditures. And the remaining balance is $216,616.17. In the state fund, interest received $11.26. There were no expenditures. The balance is $132,632.27, of which $3,020.63 is in equipment accounts. And that lets a total of all the accounts as of today is $1212,375.87.
Thank you. Comments or questions, guys?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Miscellaneous items?
Well, okay, the Register and Recorder of Deeds office is going to be closed November 27th from noon to 2:00 P.M. And the Pennsylvania State Police have a new program. It's an overdose spike notification program. And there are some copies of it over there. It's to the mayors, township, and municipal supervisors, and fire EMS chiefs in there. You can enroll in this program. And they have links and so forth to be watching for overdose.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Roadmaster report?
Yeah, we finished the melon. We got the trucks all ready for winter maintenance. The Greenberry Culver arrived today and construction has started on that.
Okay. Did any idea on how long do they think it'll take them?
They're saying three weeks providing, three to four weeks providing weather conditions.
Okay.
They're hoping to.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the Roadmaster?
No.
Supervisors report anything?
I have one phone call. I'm wondering if they were going to paint lines. If we were going to paint the lines on Oxford Road since it's been torn chip.
Okay.
I didn't know, you know, if that was in the plan or not. And I expressed that to him. He was an elderly gentleman and he said that he would like to see at least a center line painted.
Okay.
So that was all I had.
I have nothing.
Okay, at last month's meeting, there was a concern about waste management. I followed up with waste management and they contacted the person. They told me they contacted the person who had the complaint. And it was resolved at that point in time. I assume it's taken care of because I haven't heard anything else. Also, there was complaints about flies. I talked to the farm owners about the issue, as well as the people that own the chickens. Because, you know, if nobody had spoken to them, they don't know that there's a concern. And they both ensured me that they are following the programs that they're supposed to be doing. Okay? Any other questions? Nothing for you, Paul?
No.
Okay, thank you. Gus, sitting officer?
Okay. They issued a letter of waiver to Ed Keller over on 4260 Oxford Road. He's replacing the siding on two sides of his existing barn. They issued a letter of waiver to Ethan Yoder at Iaville York Springs Road. And he's putting a new roof on his existing house. They issued a letter of waiver to Karen Teckler at 140 Tracy Drive. She's replacing two windows and two entry doors on her house. Gus Friedenwald, that's myself. I issued a letter of waiver to myself. I replaced the siding on the high gable and nobody could reach. And then they issued a building permit to Blue Mountain Trim. The real name is Dave Lichtenberger at 440 Saldridge Road. He's putting a roof over two small sheds that house animals. And also a 20 by 30 office extension to his shed. They issued a building permit to Joe Sanders at 105 Tracy Drive. He's getting 38 rooftop solar panels installed on his house. They issued a building permit for a new house. Garmin Builders at 114 Tammy Drive. Two-story, single-family, 2,285 square feet. And I issued a well permit to Jake Batez at 185 Goodyear Road. He has to drill a new well. The house presently has a spring. Aside from that, PSAT sent me a zoning update workshop that they're having a Zoom meeting on. And I will participate in that. That's the latest. FEMA is having a workshop in Philadelphia on the latest stormwater regulations, updates to the insurance program. I'm not going to participate. We only have one place in the township that floods. And we've never had a claim on that. So I'm just going to ignore that. JVI has a driveway permit working for their third driveway. PennDOT is asking for comments on it. Scott reacted to it. I sent a letter of acknowledgement that I got it. But they want me to write a letter and to react to that. There's a drought in the area. We had several calls about the fire ordinance. And I believe that's on the agenda for this evening. And also, I had a trash call too. A resident of our township who lives on Farmview Road. He's moving to Sunset Lane. He calls Waste Management to transfer his service. And they tell him that unless the renter who moves into his place he's vacating also signs up for their service, that he has to honor and pay for the rest of the year. So I called our contact and they got that straightened out. That's actually wrong. And we had a zoning hearing here last night. Basically, they asked for a variance, a dimensional devariance, because the building that sits on the site that they're purchasing doesn't meet the 100-foot setback from the edge of the road.
Right.
It's short, about between 2 and 1/2 and 4 and 1/2 feet. So they asked for a variance of that. They do meet the side yard setback of 50 feet. So after everybody gave testimony, the zoning hearing board granted a de minimis variance, which is a little one. So they meet. The building is acceptable. And that's it for that.
Okay.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Gus?
Gus, do you know how many vacant lots are still in the Tammy Drive?
Well, I talked to the man today. And he tells me he thinks there's one left. I guess I gotta go look.
Thank you. Scott, engineer report? No, next one up.
Okay, Greenberry Culver replacement. Structure has been delivered to the site. The contractor has begun work. Myersville Road Culver, the design is almost complete. And I plan on submitting the permit application tomorrow. Still have some work on the specifications to do. But I anticipate a bid date around the first of March.
Okay.
Rolling Road Culver, I submitted that permit four weeks ago. So I should have comments from DEP any day. We're still working with the Adams County Planning Commission for updating the subdivision land development ordinance. And the only plan that's still currently under review is for our JVI Group's land development plan. Their last extension expires February 6th, 2025. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you. Okay, Narima report, I mean, sorry, Fire Company reports?
I didn't get any from it. Oh, back there they are.
Are you there?
I didn't have time to get a detailed one.
No problem.
Fireside had ran 17 calls for the month of October, five of which were in Huntington Township, with 73 personnel responding. And I believe there was five rush calls that we had responded to just since the last meeting. There was a fireplace that ran 11 calls, four of which were in Huntington Township, and with 15 personnel.
Thank you.
Does that mean they went to put the fires out?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Questions? May I have your name, please?
Dustin Walters.
Austin?
Dustin.
Of Dustin. Thank you.
Narima report?
Is that normal sort of fire report for this month? Since it's been such a drought.
I'll say this. People have been very, very observant to the burn ban in Huntington Township. We've had more mutual aid into Tyrone and up Vendersville Way and Mount Holly. People in our area are being very courteous and listening to what we're asking.
Thank you. Okay, Narima, report?
There was no Narima meeting. I think the next one is February.
Okay, thank you. Old Business Review and Approve Greenberry Road Progression. We already had that. We talked at Myers Town. We talked about that. And we talked about Rolling Road. So they're all done. Next item is review and adopt the 25 proposed budget. Pat, you want to talk about that, or you want me to?
It's up to you.
Well, basically, if you look at our total revenues for our projection, with our carryover, we expect to have $1.9 million in 25. And we expect our expenditures to be $1.2 million. So at the end of the year, our surplus will be $710,000. And that, again, is without any, levying any taxes, property taxes. It's just our earned income and our other income through our permitting processes. And the kind of stuff we get. Certainly, we have the liquid fuels money. The major items, we have some, we still have the liabilities or the expenses for some of the callers that are going to be. Chuck put in some road projects, $260,000 for next year. And again, this is just the budget. We don't know what we're going to spend. But this, so we can plan and submit it for next year's budget. Okay? So certainly, our expenditures this hot year are a little higher with some of the Culver projects we had. But we did get some money to offset that, so that's a good thing. Yeah, we're still fiscally strong with the $710,000 surplus without any debt, without any real estate taxes.
Question, please?
Yes.
Is the draft of the proposed budget usually available to the public to review before the approval? Or is it just what's on that screen there?
I don't know if I under, I don't understand your question. You mean, you want to s-
Well, usually, a municipality allows people to look at the budget beforehand. So if they have any questions.
Well, we have to advertise it now. We have to advertise it. And if you want to come and look at it, you have that opportunity.
It'll be available for inspection.
Right.
After it's approved?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is proposed.
This is our, this is our proposed budget that's going to be advertised. Then you can make an appointment to come and review it.
Thank you.
You guys have any other questions or comments on the budget?
Not really, no. I mean, it does depend on some of the expenditures that we plan to make, being the truck and the-
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that's common for sure. I mean, our tax revenue is up about, well, lower 5% year-to-date.
More than that.
Yeah, it's-
Do you have the YATV comparison?
It's been, so certainly, their income's up, which means the people are making the money. So that's-
Well, I guess it depends when we have to pay for the-
Yeah.
I mean, we have allocated money.
Right.
But we don't know when that bill's going to come due, I guess.
It's going to be either this year or this, or next year.
It could be this year or next year.
Yeah, so we're going to either have more or we're going to have a less.
Correct. Just for somebody to know that when that truck comes in, we don't know when we'll get the bill for it, have to pay for it.
So, so we're $385,000 this year versus $387,000.
What, coming in 11 months?
Right, I understand that. But if you, if you subtract that and divide it, it's 5%. If you deduct the $22,000 and compare the $387 minus 22 in the $385, it's 5% higher for through 11 months. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so make a motion to-
Yeah, so we need to make a motion to adopt the proposed budget to 25. I will make that motion in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? I'm sorry? Yeah, we're approving the-
The advertised.
We're advertising the proposed budget.
Not the actual.
Yes.
Right.
The motion was to advertise the proposed budget. And it'll be adopted in next month.
Right.
Okay, so we're all clear there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Review alternate SEO proposal from GHI and make appointment if approved.
Okay, GHI notified us that one of their employees was certified. And they're offering their services as the alternate. His name is Wyatt Stambul from GHI.
Okay.
GHI Group Panover PA Engineers and Surveyors.
Because right now, that's a vacant position.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, Terry, as of the end of August, I guess he was.
Right. Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
No.
I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion if we accept it.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay.
Wyatt Stambul.
From GHI. They're second.
I'll second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is review and approve the solutions proposal for the cameras and microphones for a meeting. We talked about this last month, about getting cameras so we could livestream our meetings. I contacted a company in Biglerville who does this type of work. There've been other municipalities and school districts. They were here, looked at the room, and came up with a proposal. You guys have a copy of it?
Correct.
The quote is for $3,989 to have the equipment installed, set up the livestream through our website. The program needs to do all those types of things. So we talked about that.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept this proposal and contact and contract this guy to install.
And they are a member of CoStar, so we don't have to get other bids. They're a member of CoStar, so.
Yep.
Okay. So it's been moved, they're second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So I will contact them and see how, when they can do it here.
Okay. I have a few words to say about this. Last month, I proposed this particular camera installation because we have been misrepresented. We have been actually made fun of in this, we're called Huntington Township, Crooked Huntington Township, I'm sorry. We've been maligned in this so-called service to the citizens. And this is one way that we can make official what happens in these meetings, that it will not be edited, it will not be interrupted. And when this comes to online, there'll be signs posted at the cameras as well as outside. So if anyone doesn't want to be recorded, you may not attend the meeting because everyone's going to be recorded, both the audience and us as well. And, you know, we've been misrepresented, been lied. We've gotten so many phone calls because of lies that have been put on. And I'd just like to read one of them, just one of them. It's all very short. It comes from, I won't even mention the guy's name. He's from the other side of the country. That we're hiding criminal activity and more cameras are coming. You're going to be filmed every time you walk outside your house, the way we can see what kind of criminal activity you're actually committing. More politicians are going to go to prison. Now, this is a mild one. Most of them, we cannot read in public because they are littered with filth, curse words you can't believe, as well as death threats. And it's all because we've been misrepresented, we've been lied about. And it's a sad situation that we have to do this to be able to put on the public what actually happens here. And it's really sad. And the biggest lie of all is when Huntington Township Watch claims to be a service to the public. You are a disservice. And you should be ashamed of what you have done. You picked it up on the internet and now you can't take it away.
Please answer that. I wasn't going to speak to this this evening because I told you last month, your defamatory statements about our misrepresenting what goes on here and that we edit things out is completely false. So I really hope that you have evidence to that effect.
But what do you-
Last month, excuse me, I have the floor now. You love to defame, don't you?
Okay.
And your solicitor allows it. Excuse me.
No, 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 no.
What?
You can have your comment at the end of the meeting.
No, he brought it up now. It's a discussion. It was not on the agenda.
No, it's not, it's not a discussion. It is not.
Excuse me, I'm going to continue because I'm not waiting till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
This has to be done now. You indicated last month that there was a video of you stuttering, et cetera. Now, I realize we're, we're of an age where we come from old school. And unfortunately, you've been left behind in technology. You indicated you don't know anything about social media. And that, that's a sad situation.
I've educated myself.
That's wonderful. I'm glad you did. Because have you ever heard of political cartoons that are in the Gettysburg Times?
Yes, I read them.
Shorts on YouTube for municipalities in governmental meetings is considered political cartoons. And when the three of you got involved with trying to vote out Mark Leir behind his back.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you right now and stop you.
What?
This is not the time and place. There's no-
This is not the time for a supervisor, an elected official, to defame me or the channel that we are very proud of. We get wonderful comments from people who are normal. This kind of reaction by you people is abnormal. And you, also with your defamatory statements. When you write something to someone, you better have evidence to that effect. And so should you. Those three, the fact that you three were lying about who was responsible for that email to PSAT. And Mr. Boyer sat there and read that it was all Pat Davis. But yet, those, that political-
Okay, ma'am, I'm going to interrupt you.
I'm sorry. This is, this has got me-
This has nothing to do with Township, but if you want-
Why did he bring that up, then?
He expressed his opinion.
Okay. And now I'm expressing mine at the time that he is expressing his. I don't want to hear this. Because you are now trying to chill my freedom of speech in this, in this Township meeting. He brought it up. You know it's defamatory. You at least-
I don't know anything about it.
Well, yeah, you don't know anything. Does he have evidence to this effect? No, he does not. Because he has to prove that in a court of law. What does he have?
This is not a court of law, ma'am. That's my point. This is not a court of law.
No, but I am responding to him. And you don't want to hear it because you don't want everybody to know.
No, I don't want to-
Because his defamatory statements were then repeated in the Gettysburg Times. And the Gettysburg Times reporter did not even contact me. the Gettysburg Times reporter did not even contact me to get our version of this.
And how is that a township issue?
How is this a township? You keep saying that, but your fellow elected official keeps bringing it up. So I'm responding, and if you'd stop interrupting me, I'll continue. So when you three, and it's, and it's in that cartoon, that political cartoon, you said we contacted, we contacted, so did you, Paul Geis, but Pat Davis was going to take the fall for you two, and that's disgusting and despicable, and that's what that political cartoon was about. It wasn't about you stuttering, it was about, and you claim, oh, I don't stutter. Well, that, we weren't saying that. These things have to be brought to the public's view, and you heard Cody Lear last year, I mean, last month. He said we have brought into the light how you retaliate, retaliate, and that's what you're doing right now, and that's what you did, retaliate against members that you consider transplants or not in the clique. And it's very well aware here that there's a big clique here. Now, now, as far as the three sweaters, well, that particular video-
That's enough, I'm going to stop in there.
No, that particular-
We're not talking about sweaters in a township meeting.
No, he did. No, but he's saying this is misinformation, we edit it. That was to bring across the fact that, and the video states on the thumbnail, January and February of 2023. And in that video, it has a calendar that flips to show you, those were a compilation of two different meetings, and it's right there. So you had no idea what you were talking about, and I don't appreciate your defamatory statements. This is the second time in three years that you've done that to me, and I don't put up with it. Do you understand that? I don't want to hear it, so you can continue now.
Well, thank you for allowing me to continue, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And you say you don't edit them.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you, you familiarize yourself and check around what it means to edit three, two cameras and an audio recorder, downloading and then combining all those. That's what we talk about when we say editing, not, and anything that was edited out, a defamatory statement made, we saved you a lawsuit possibly because Gus indicated at one of the meetings, a defamatory statement against a real estate agent. I was not going to put that on this video because I would be accused of, of actually a part of that. I contacted that real estate agent and sent him exactly what Gus said, and he sent it to his client, and he did not, though, send it to the real estate company he worked for because he knew that was going to be an issue. And we indicated on the screen because of defamatory, so, well-
You've now talked eight minutes and none of this-
That's fine.
And none of this-
Well, then you should control your fellow elected official because he doesn't know when to stop lying, and I'm not putting it up with it. And you shouldn't either because it's a possible lawsuit. And that attorney sitting there, who, who bills the township taxpayers, should control and talk to him about it and ask him what proof, and I would like to see what proof you had for a written statement you put out.
Okay, moving on. Discuss and determine renewal of Adams County Wealth Mandate CD which matures in December of 24. Guys, looking, look, personally, I think we should just put that in the money market until we see what invoices we're going to get for the truck and the culverts before we make any decisions, and then we can decide our position. Are you guys okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
That's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is enact the burn ban if necessary. By our ordinance, and Todd, you correct me if I'm wrong.
I have this one.
We can enact a burn ban, or I can as the chairman, and then it's ratified at the next meeting by a vote.
Correct.
Okay. So the question is, guys, so it's raining now, which I hope it keeps raining, so we don't have to enact a burn ban. Hindsight's 2020, we should probably have enacted it a couple of weeks ago, but to me-
We'd have to do it in an official meeting, though, correct?
No, I, I can enact it, and then we, if the conditions would change between now and next month, I can enact it, we can publicize it on our website, and then we ratify it at our next meeting, okay? To me, let's see how the rain is.
Yeah.
And if we think we need to put one in place next week, we can do so. That might save a thread.
And I think the general area of other people enacting on the fire company said it's basically got a trickle-over effect down the road.
There was a county-wide-
Right.
It was up to the townships, and county actually enacted a burn ban.
Right.
And then the townships came along-
With our ordinance, right.
With their ordinance, I mean, gonna say Liberty Township, it was over by Shippensburg Road, or over by Shippensburg, actually saw signs on the roads, you know?
Yeah, I saw that in York County. They had it actually on one of those, you know, signs blocking, right? Okay, thank you. Okay?
I think that's fine.
I mean, hopefully, it's-
Yeah, we get enough rain done.
Yeah. It's possible to rain next week, too, I think, so, okay. Subdivision of Land Development, there's nothing new on JVI.
Well, the only thing is the HOP for the third entrance for the truck garage, and-
Right.
That's, well, everybody's working on it, the study's been done. I gotta write them a letter, and Scott's already sent it, and the county, well, I'm sure I'll submit one.
Okay.
The big thing is that the garage that they're proposing is dependent on the HOP and the, uh, D, uh-
MPDS program.
Yeah, that thing. And those will probably take several months, and they'll grant us extensions till they get to the point, and then when they get those permits, the permit can be issued to start construction.
Thank you.
Right now, that's the status.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, the planning commission is the 25th of November. I know there was some confusion about that, but it's back to the original date that was adopted beginning of the year, and our next meeting is December the 12th at 7:00. Correct? Public comment? Yes?
Last month, I asked about Cody Lear's right to know request, which I had no idea was missing from the package. I had submitted a request on August 9th for a period of all submitted right-to-know requests since you took it off the agenda, from June, BOSS agenda through the date of the request, which was August 9th. Pat acknowledged it, my email, on August 12th. Then on September 13th, I submitted another request for all right-to-know requests that were submitted to the township for the period August 9th through September 13th. Pat Davis, the ORO, acknowledged it on September 17th. I'd like to know why I was not sent Cody Lear's right-to-know request from that period of June through September 13th.
Well, I did explain about my dates being, when it was written, and it just simply was missed. I suggested that I should give it to you, and I think they said that, that you should ask for it in writing.
That's what was discussed last meeting, correct?
But I'm, I'm good with just amending, I simply missed it.
And that's fine, and that's what I couldn't understand. Last month, Solicitor Todd King, as usual, an obstructionist, said, well, you sent an email to Pat, and then I'll review it. Now, if that was already reviewed by Todd King for Cody Lear's request, why do I have to submit a new request when you are the one who missed it, not me?
I didn't send Cody's to him.
Okay.
Cody and I, Cody came in, he wasn't sure what he wanted to ask for. We were looking at, you know, some, some of it was just dates as to when, when raises were put into effect, and there were like three or four things he was asking for, so we, some of it needed a right-to-know, some of it was just a simple, okay, here it is, it was, you know, whatever date it was. I can send you that, I, I don't have a problem with sending you that.
But who was, because it's already a month, and that's what I mean. You're the ORO, I would assume that you know what you're supposed to do, and for someone to advise you not to do that is really despicable. I mean, you, you know, when you, when you missed a whole right-to-know request, you came back, what was it, when I said, I never got a response, and you said, oh, well, you know, I really meant to do an extension. I, I want to work with you, Pat, and, and I said, oh, that's fine, I understand, sometimes you, you know, you forget things, that's fine. But when you're honest and say, you know, it was my fault, fine, okay, and I gave you that 30 days, whatever, and you did get me what I needed, and this is what I mean. Right-to-know requests should be kind of a mutual respect of each other, and I should not have to go through an attorney, send an email to you, and then he reviews it to see if it's okay when you, as, as the ORO, know your job. And that's what's upsetting. That's what's upsetting about all these people here, okay? Because, because of who I am and because I ask too many questions, I'm retaliated and they try to intimidate me. I'm from Philly, I want you all to know, I don't get intimidated, okay? Because I grew up in Philadelphia, and that's who I am. I've also worked for attorneys, so I do my research, et cetera. So, thank you, if you can send that, that would be great. Yeah. Yeah, because otherwise, it looks like you're concealing something, and it's like, why are they hiding it? That's when we don't know what's going on.
Now, let me ask you one thing. When you wanted those other right-to-knows, you only wanted the right-to-know, you didn't want my answer to it.
Yes.
Do you want my answer to Cody's?
Yes, because that was before I, I just wanted the right-to-know request, correct? Yes, thank you.
Which is it? You want the, you want-
I want his entire package, whatever, his, the response from the township. Yes, thank you. So, the next one is-
Okay, you've, you've just spoken five minutes again.
I'm sorry, but she was responding to me.
Well, see, that's the issue, ma'am. It's, we have a public comment where you're supposed to talk about something, and it turns into a question and answer period, so-
And when am I supposed to get answers?
What would you like to speak about next?
Okay, this is the last one, if you'd like to know. Laura Hope, okay? At the April 13th meeting, she decided to make a public record and record me, okay? I told her at that time, she was, she was creating a township record. So, October 23rd, I requested, you requested 30-day extension, which was fine. October 24th, I received an email with a video of just 1.27 seconds, 1 minute and 27 seconds. So I replied to you that I would like to bring a thumbnail in, but I expected the full video. To this date, from October 24th, I haven't heard from you about that. So I'm wondering, am I getting the full video? And the video I received was very grainy, and why is that? Why am I not receiving the full video? She videotaped that entire meeting, and she admitted it on the video that she was recording the meeting and specifically me.
Do you think she really said that?
But you don't have to answer that question.
But just briefly, Pat asked Laura, I believe, on two separate occasions, for any video that she had, and that is what she said.
So did she delete the rest of the meeting? Is that what happened? Because the grainy video, if you notice, I was videotaping with my camera, and I have a clear thing. Why is her so grainy? Was that re, um, was that taken somewhere because she had deleted it, and then that's all they could retrieve from her phone? Is that what happened?
I watched your YouTube thing, and I don't know, she said she recorded the whole thing, but at the end, she-
Okay, let me finish, and that'll be the end of it until I, I start writing or doing what I need to do, because now it's over the 30 days, okay?
I have till 22nd, though.
Well, I mean, it's over my appeal time, so I may have to go through this again, whatever, but I'll handle it. Now I've lost my train of thought, but, um, that's fine.
Any other public comment?
Uh-
State your name, please.
Steve, hey, Steve.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
When are we looking at completion of the camera system?
I will contact the gentleman, Damar. I, I don't know the answer to that question, how quickly can get it here and get it installed.
I have a few things I would like to say.
Okay.
I have a burr in my saddle, and it's rubbing raw, but I'm not going to say anything until we have cameras in here, then it can't be, and that's, I know, that, you know, it can't be going either way.
Okay.
But I have got a real burr. I've lived in this township for 50-plus years, and I've never seen such a menagerie in the, like I'm seeing every township meeting by the public.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else, public comment? Yes?
Yeah, Klein?
Yeah.
You said about that chicken farm?
Yep.
You notified him?
Yep.
Is that something I can call?
Well, honestly, if you have an issue with that, it'd be better if you would address it with the individual than coming to the township, because you delayed time by, I mean, to me, if you have an issue with your neighbor, I would contact them directly and have a conversation.
You have a number for that?
I can get you one, yeah. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. No other business, I'll make a motion for German, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries, thank you.